So altogether, we take the bond money we gathered to F Y twenty-one, and the bond money that we realized.
It's on automatic focus. Can't stop it.
Two million, eighteen thousand.
It's recording now.
So on the warrant tonight, there are several articles, articles two through twelve, that call for, as I said, to allocate some of that free cash for a number of different purposes. So from our original bond money of a little over two million dollars.
I hold that as that.
Fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars that are on the warrant articles that you have in the tax. The numbers on some of those articles are going to be significantly different, lower, fortunately, on a couple of those articles. So that the bond money will actually be fifty-two all of the articles, it will be significantly less than that nine hundred and four hundred thousand dollars, which is six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The Finance Committee has put three articles on our one. And we're recommending that we take some of that free cash and put it in some of our reserve accounts. We spent the last five or six years digging out of the hole in our deficit and paying back to the state the bond money that we were able to borrow to recover on that. One of the things we need to do is to take advantage of years like this where we have some money and put some of that money away to address needs that we know we have that we need to plan for and act with. So the first was out of the ten. O T A is an acronym for other personnel post-employment benefits. Primarily, that's health insurance. So when employees of the town retire, they typically get a pension from either the county or particular work association that you might have. And the town picks up this year of the health insurance cost. O T A is, the government has set regulations that says that towns must realize and account for the liability they have for future payments of their health insurance for retirees who were past employment. And that's what the O T A is concerned with to pay. Right now, they do a study, and the last study that we have done, is the town liability that is looking out in the future, how much money it goes cost to pay benefits to former employees, is about twenty-four billion dollars. Now, we do that, we pay as we go. Every year in the budget, there's a line item for retiring health insurance benefits. This year, it was a little over half a million dollars. So that's the way we've handled it in the past. O T A, the government said, you really need to put some money aside and start developing your own trust so that you can have money in the future that's dedicated specifically to that purpose. The Almo bit, the health insurance is going to get less expensive, it's going to get more expensive, and the liability of town increases because people's lifespans and expectations are longer as well. So if we sat building our trust fund, and we have a trust, we put about ten thousand dollars into it seven, eight years ago, have not been a dime in since then. So we give up twelve thousand dollars in our O T A trust, and we get a twenty-four billion dollar liability. If you think about how your pension works, social security works, you pay into that while you're working, and then when you retire, it pays back to you. So that money was invested over the course of your whole working life. And it's invested, and it grows. Certainly, we take back more money than we ever paid in the pension funds. That's what O T A would do for our health insurance. Start building up the trust so that we can reduce the liability that we have in the future. That improves our credit rating and makes sure that the money that's set aside for health insurance can't be used for any other use, like a downwind. Article eleven, separation benefits, it's a new fund. We've already told you, we've had to allocate a significant amount of money with a long-term contract for your retirees. And these new benefits typically a new sick time or unused vacation time, that we've seen figures that run into twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That's on the budget anywhere. We know that liability is there. We know that these funds are due to the employees, but we haven't set any money aside to take care of that when the employee chooses to retire or to return in town. We took a look at this and saw that there's the numbers that are there. Unused vacation, all eighty-one employees that are employed by the town, not fully bought in, like the town, get vacation time and they pay for their vacation if they can use it. Sick time is a little bit different. It used to be a pretty common benefit for people, buyback of unused sick time. It's not a benefit that's usually offered right now. So people who have been shorter employment times usually don't have that benefit. So there's a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I can't really walk out of the door right now, all of my employees, but it all, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of those benefits. So we're suggesting that we put some money aside, fifty thousand dollars this year, and each year, put some money aside until the bond money in that fund equals the liability. And then we're going to have to come and try to scale the duty to pay ball when an employee decides to retire. The last article is stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is really the town's savings account. It's the rainy day fund. It's the fund we need when something gets struck again. We haven't put any money into the stabilization fund probably since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So we're suggesting that we take some of this money, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and vote, put it into the stabilization fund. What we're also working on is some language that would codify some of these measures so that each year, we'd be looking at a way to have some understanding as to how we're going to fund these savings accounts of reserve funds in the future. Any questions?
Last follow-up questions. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the article. Each one of you will receive one of these when you enter the hall this evening. These are your voting pads. If you've never used them before, they're really simple to use. And Article one is going to be the practice vote. If you support the report of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, you press one. If you do not, you press two. And we'll give you about ten seconds to do that. So vote one for yes, two for no, starting now. And we have ninety-nine percent yes, one percent no, the article passes. Okay, Article two will be read by select person who points.
Technical difficulty. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the payment of bills of a prior fiscal year as presented.
It's been moved and seconded. This does require a nine-tenth vote as a collection for this article. Decision of the Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval by five-zero.
And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends six-zero.
Does anyone have any questions related to Article number two?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
This is a customary article that provides the town authorization to pay bills remaining from prior fiscal years.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We will proceed to vote again with your key pad. One, if you support the Article number two as identified, two is a no. Please vote. And again, ninety-nine percent to one percent, Article two passes. Article three will be read by select person who wants.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of sixty-five thousand for the construction of a municipal parking lot relocated on Hamilton Castle at five feet, and we ask zero, we ask three, zero, zero, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article three as identified. Vote to the Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen voted to approve by five-zero.
Thank you. Vote of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended six-zero.
Thank you. Discussion from the maker of the motion?
Madam Moderator, this parking lot would be located on Cueson Street, between the library and police station. It would provide additional parking downtown and support of business during and following the Central Street reconstruction. This will add some twenty-five parking slots.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. A or one is a yes vote on Article three. B or two is a no vote. Please vote. And eighty-six percent of the attendees are in support of the article, fourteen percent no. This is only a majority vote, and therefore, the article passes. Article four, select person Salter.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of sixty-six thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents for the acquisition of a replacement one-ton truck for the D P W as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article one, Article four, I'm sorry, as presented. This is a majority vote. Vote to the Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval by five-zero.
And the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee recommends six-zero.
Thank you. Explanation from select person Salter?
Yes, a one-ton truck was totaled in the winter of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. They get our fleet, one truck short for summer winter weather conditions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments related to Article number four? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article four as presented, press A or one for yes, press B or two for no. Please vote. And the vote is ninety-six percent in favor, four percent no, the article passes. Select person Labrie will read Article number five, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents to fund the F Y twenty-one operating deficit for the water department as presented.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve Article five as presented. This is a majority vote. And we'll hear from the Selectmen, your vote.
Board of Selectmen, you voted to recommend five-zero.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommended six-zero.
Select person Labrie, would you like to speak on the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At the end of the fiscal year, the income does not equal the expenses, so the enterprise has to work. I just think one of the things we need to change, so we're asking you this evening, we're asking you this evening to approve the free cash.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on Article five?
Is that deficit because of fees that weren't collected or because of underestimate of operating costs?
Could the town manager speak to that, please?
Excellent question, thank you. So, and to repeat, just to make sure I got it right, the question was if that deficit is due to a lack of collected bills or if it was an underestimate of operating costs of operating. The system, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And so, to be honest, it's a mixed vote. There were some uncollected bills, which is fairly typical, and it wasn't far off from what we would normally see. An aspect is the cost of running the plant, the capital costs exceed to an extent how much we're taking in based on what the water rate is. And so, it's a combined mix of issues. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Does anyone else have a question or comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on Article five. All those in favor of the article as presented signify by pressing A or one, opposed, B or two. Please vote. And the percentages, eighty-five percent in favor, fifteen percent opposed, majority vote, it passes. Article six, select person Labrie again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and fifty four thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents to fund the F Y twenty-one operating deficit for the wastewater department as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article six as presented. This is a majority vote. The vote of the Selectmen was?
Board of Selectmen voted through five-zero.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends six-zero.
Selectman Labrie, would you like to speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As with the previous article, the numbers didn't come out the way that we hoped they would, or they should have, so therefore, we're asking for this amount of money to make the enterprise fund work today. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, sir, please come up to use the microphone.
Let me try. Same question as last time, is that because of bills that weren't collected or because of underestimate of the actual cost of the current?
Sure, so just to repeat, it was the same question as last time, and the answer is the same as well. Water and sewer are billed together.
Thank you. Does that respond to your question?
Yes, I have a question.
Did I see another hand? Yes.
What is the deficit? What didn't you collect? How much money?
Sure, so that number is reflected in the request in the article. I'm sorry, are you asking how much was uncollected or how much was the deficit?
How much money did you not collect, so now we have to help you, give you money to pay the bills?
Understood. So the deficit is the amount reflected in the article. The amount uncollected was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of last count.
Are you putting blame against the people who have not paid their bill?
Sure, so during the COVID-19 pandemic, the shut-off policy was halted, and it was recently restarted several months ago. We did see an uptick in collections, but I would reiterate that the amount that we have uncollected is not untypical. And the same goes for real estate bills likewise, but after about a year, that money is leaned onto the real estate bill, collected one way or another.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So you're saying if someone hasn't paid their wastewater during the COVID, we're going to have to pay them? Is that what you're saying?
No, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it would be typical if there was a bill that wasn't paid, that we would go out and physically turn the water off. That policy was halted during the COVID-19 pandemic. We returned to that policy several months ago, and as a result, we did see an uptick in collections.
So we will eventually get the money that wasn't paid?
Eventually. But I would also note that the money that wasn't paid was about typical. We account for uncollected, is what I'm saying.
Are you satisfied with your response? Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just wondered if, because looking at the articles following this, it looks like it's going to be the same problem again next year, or this fiscal year. It looks like we're, I don't know if it's the same or not.
That's the next article. Can we stick to the article as it stands?
Well, what I'm saying is, has anyone looked at the rates, increasing the rates?
Madam Moderator? Yes. I'll have some information on that when we get to that article. Any other questions? Hearing all those in favor of Article six as presented, press A or one for yes, B or two for no. Please vote. And eighty-one percent in favor, nineteen percent opposed, this is the majority vote, therefore, the article passes. Article seven, because I turned a page. Select person Labrie, Article seven, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before I read the article, I would love that I will give some changes in the amounts. I move that the town vote to transfer from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as A R P A, the sum of fifty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents to fund the projected F Y twenty-two operating deficit for the water department. And to decrease the F Y twenty-two water budget as voted in Article seven of the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-one Annual Town Meeting by seventy thousand dollars, from one million one hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars to one million forty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars as presented.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve Article seven as presented. This is a majority vote. Board of Selectmen, decision?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval, three to two.
Thank you. And Finance Committee, decision?
The Finance Committee voted not to recommend six-zero.
Explanation by select person Labrie?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article, the next one, as was just pointed out, addresses the water and wastewater account for F Y twenty-two, which is what we're getting now, F Y twenty-one, and it has been period this past year. There are a couple of different things that we are looking at. Number one is the rates. That's always one way to fill a deficit. In this particular instance, we could also consider increasing the tax rate. The reality is that this has to be addressed in the one of three ways. The two I just mentioned, and then the one that's before us is being made. The state will not allow us to move forward with this knowledge of a projected deficit.
Thank you. You have more? Okay. Okay, I know someone's going to ask, so I will vote of the Selectmen for the two votes against, just to see if they wish to identify the reasons. And I'll do the same with the Finance Committee.
And the reason I voted no is because these water and wastewater funds are enterprise funds. They're supposed to be funded by user fees. That's what an enterprise fund is, and this is not easy user fees to fund in a entire asset.
And I voted no for the same reason. Free cash is really our savings, and we should not be paying for operating costs from our station. It's not even a paper itself.
Thank you. Finance Committee, have a comment on why you voted six-zero?
Excuse me, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. King. I apologize, I should have identified the other change in the article. And that is the source of the funding. Our original feeling was that it would be from free cash, and when this article was presented to the board and the Finance Committee, that was our understanding. Research, the town manager's office has told us that we are eligible under the A R P Fund, the American Rescue Plan Act, to backfill these accounts with money from that Act. They approved it, so therefore, we do not need to take it from free cash at the moment. So that is the other change on the article as of this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. King. The Finance Committee is objective to this article because it doesn't resolve the issue. This is the third, the third vote of the town to supplement the water and wastewater enterprise funds covered shot calls. The reality is that the user rates have not supported either of those funds for quite a while. Since I've been on the committee, we've seen the town need to use the retained earnings to balance off the expenditures at the end of the year. Retained earnings is the best way to save the savings account. What you spent down to savings account is nothing else to take care of that deficit, except for the town, which owns the enterprise fund, to help to cover the deficit. So we did that last day, we did it just now for last year's deficit, and we're being asked to put money aside for this year's deficit without addressing the issue. And the issue is that the rates are too low. Nobody likes the raised rates. But the enterprise fund operates on the benefit of all the people who use the enterprise, and the cost of the enterprise fund is borne by the users. Certainly, there's infrastructure, and there's money in your operating budget that covers some of the costs for municipal buildings, and infrastructure. But this act doesn't address that issue at all. The second concern we have is that we're voting money to cover a deficit that we'll realize at the end of June. So we've got about seven or eight months to look at other ways to close that gap, including increasing the rates. So the Finance Committee felt that certainly the problem is real, but the solution is, again, a stock debt solution that puts money from free cash, from the old town, to fill that hole in the budget.
Yes. Just a couple of numbers. The residents that use water is sixty-one percent, so thirty-nine percent are So thirty-nine percent are paying for those sixty-one percent who use water. For wastewater, sixty-six percent of the residents are subsidizing the thirty-four percent that use it. That was another reason why we just did not think this was fair.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say it's committed, because I can't turn around and see? Okay. I see a hand raised. Yes. Can you come down and use the microphone? Yeah. And I will get you in the back. Thank you.
Gina Santos. So I guess my concern is that everybody likes to raise, or would like to recommend to increase the rates. However, you know, we need to also realize that we use and waste a lot of the town water within town events. We, you know, a lot of the well water and other non-town water users use town water, whether it be the summer solstice, whether it be cemetery users, whether it be other, you know, watering the gardens and flowers throughout town. Well, the musters, the Clive Garden musters, well, throughout the years, they were not queered for the fire hydrants. Many of the hydrants were used in the years. To my understanding, the veterans, they said that they were metered over at the veterans' buildings and such, but I've also been told it was not. But again, my husband, you know, works a lot and a lot of overtime to be able to pay these bills. And, you know, we keep trying to say to raise these rates, and we need to fall on these town water users. Well, you guys who are not town water users also use this water. Everybody in town uses that water, whether it be at another event of some kind. They, you know, the Clyde Garden, they use the water to water the flowers there. I pay that bill. Town water users pay that bill. The cemetery, when they set up the graves and so, excuse me, they don't, they don't have an account, I guess, for water and such. They do nest for the maintenance of the grounds and things, but they don't necessarily for the water. So to my understanding, they may be metered at this time, but who's paying for that water? Us, town water users. The country club or the golf club, golf club, that was another account that we lost. That was a huge loss for the town, because now we are, you know, a loss of products. So I guess my concern is that whenever the water or the solace come up, it's always directed kind of in the negative. I just feel that, you know, either the schools or the water, nobody ever wants to kind of fund it, and the well users are always like, nope, it's not my bill. I'm sorry, but you guys all benefit from it. You guys all need to kind of help one another, and we all need to work one another. And you guys need to stop, you know, putting your hands up, because we need to do a better job at collecting these bills on the past articles that people aren't paying their bills and focus on, you know, and not raise the rates. So the ones that are paying the bills aren't, you know, having some trouble. I'm sorry, I have fibromyalgia, so I have a hard time kind of straightening it out, and I'm so aggravated at this point with the water. But I'm just tired of it, because everybody wants to raise their hands and walk away from this water. But the ones that are paying the bills for the water are getting the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see another hand? Please come down.
Yeah.
I can't hear you, so you gotta yell louder than that.
Okay. I just, I concur with this young woman that just spoke. And I have a question. If they could re-explain where the money is coming from? Where the money is coming from? Yes. Could someone respond to that, either the Finance Committee or the Town Manager?
It's coming from free cash.
No.
So I can break that down a little bit. So originally, the funding source was listed as free cash. I just want to thank our accounting team who identified an opportunity to use ARPA funding, now the federal funding, in the receipt in response to COVID-19. Basically, they had determined that if you can identify and confirm the losses that you have in revenue of prior fiscal year due to COVID-19, so in this instance, it would be that we are level funding on a charity sheet from state aid, and we also saw a level funding in local receipts, that we can count that as a loss in revenue. So any amount that we lost in revenue, we can turn around and use ARPA funding, sort of like free cash. There's a couple more caveats to it. But the most important piece is that ARPA funding is almost exclusively used for infrastructure improvements, water, sewer drainage, those type of projects. Because we can identify this loss in revenue, we have more flexibility in using those ARPA funds. And that's why now we're opted to utilize that for this purpose rather than free cash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have a question? Yes, over here.
Hannah, how long does that ARPA funding go for? Is it just one year?
Sure. So it's three years. It's not quite the length of time, though, that will affect how quickly it goes with the amount of the funds. We received about three point four million dollars in ARPA funds. From our perspective, with one main line from after a hand which would cost about six million dollars per place, we have over a hundred million dollars in capital needs. So that three point four million dollars is not really a lot of money.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you. Kayla Pro votes thirty-two Goodard Street. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. I was just wondering if the vote that the Finance Committee took, if it could have won differently, had the ARPA, I think that's correct, had that been in the original vote, or if that was the original vote and your vote stands as is?
Have a response? That was their original vote. Do I see any more hands? I heard someone say so. Selectors and members.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to speak for myself. When we originally voted this was pertaining to free cash, which it no longer is. But my personal feeling, the water users have already been burdened with an increase of forty-four percent on their rates. I understand and I agree that the fund needs to be self-sustaining, and we definitely need to look at rates. But in my opinion, to have that be the only avenue right now, when we're still in the midst of a pandemic, and people are struggling to work, and have their daycare, and be productive, I just don't think it's the government doing everything that it can to help its constituents when there's other avenues that we can take as a stock debt. I agree that it needs to be addressed. We've asked for water studies and been working with the outside contractor that maintains for us. But I just, I would implore people to think about the times that we're in, especially now, that thankfully we did find other funding sources for this. It's not going to be free cash. So it'll just give some time to do that work that does, I agree, need to be done, and just to slight less of a burden, you know, to those who are paying.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Yes.
Member Bartlet Ash Street. Do we still have an issue, or it seems to me, I've read that we have an issue with water coming from Ashroomham, and again, infrastructure repairs and things that aren't done for whatever reason, year after year after year, a chronic thing. Is that correct?
Madam Moderator, thank you. Yes, that is very correct. Unfortunately, that's not right.
So I just heard today that Massachusetts is going to get twelve million dollars in the new infrastructure fund. One of the main focuses of that bill is clean water, the infrastructure for water. So if this CARES Act, correct, is going to get us over the hump this year, and possibly two more years, did someone just say that?
The ARPA plan, you have three years to use the funds. But if you spend all these funds in one year, then that's not.
Okay. And that, the other side of the coin for that is, if the money goes for the water users, I'm a water user, but I'm going to use that phrase, that means it's not going to be used for other important things. I'm just wondering, if, when we get a hike in the rates this year, can't we assume some relief that some major infrastructure construction is going to happen in the next few years that's going to help solve this lung simmering problem?
It would be wonderful if it does. Just a couple of points there. And Mr. Town Manager, check before we're in the process of having a study done of the infrastructure, water and sewer throughout the town. Something that I don't think has quite ever been done.
Are our meters working? Did we get new meters recently?
That was shut down recently. No. Oh, no. Yeah, we just wanted to say that actually. We're just talking about the pipes and the connections and stuff like that. And it's looking like sometime after, shortly after the first of the year, we'll have that study, and we'll have that information. So at that point, we'll know what it's actually going to take to fund holes and get everything going as far as the infrastructure itself. But unfortunately, the decade, it's been neglected, perhaps, to be correct.
Well, I hope we're good ready when the money forces.
And after that ready point, the state overall, we're getting
Get your requests.
Twelve million, or twelve million, whatever it is. You've got to remember that Boston's going to take their chunk first. So who knows how much will actually trickle down through the three hundred fifty-one, or three hundred fifteen other cities and towns in Massachusetts. So unfortunately, that's not something that we can count on. When it gets here, whatever does get here, I agree a hundred percent.
Well, let's be positive that maybe we're going to get something, and we can take care of this problem. It's over a decade that I know of.
Yes, it has. And as we mentioned before, you know, these articles, they don't address the issues. The state has told us that we must have a financial plan in place to, Article Seven and Eight, that they go hand in hand, before we can set our tax rate for the next fiscal year. And our tax classification hearing is in two weeks, November twenty-second. So between now and November twenty-second, the board has to do one of a couple of things, as I mentioned before. If this does not pass tonight, then we're looking at, within the next two weeks, raising water rates, water and sewer rates, or increasing the tax rate at our tax classification hearing. The articles tonight, they take a little bit of a different spin, because we do have access to the ARPA funds, which, as Mr. Sosfat educated, they are targeted for this type of work. But this problem is not going away. For full disclosure, I am not on town water or sewer. I have my own well and my own septic. Some of you may have heard of me before. Two years ago, we had put in a new septic system. And in the span of about two and a half months, we spent thirty thousand dollars from our pocket, because that is our responsibility.
Hey, Mrs. I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
One more thing. Mrs. Santos and others have made a point. Having town water and sewer benefits everyone in town, not just the direct users. It is an economic necessary for people and businesses to come into town and boost our economy. If we didn't have town sewer and water, I doubt a bullspit would be putting in a brewery. So it has economic, there's economic benefit to every single person in town to have a working infrastructure for water and sewer. How do we get there? I don't know. And we're going to have some serious conversations in the next few months about how we do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for cutting you off. Yes.
We're voting on a written article here. ARPA, I don't see it in there anywhere. Can this be reworded so, yes, that is where the money's going to come from? And not, oh, well, it didn't say that, so we pulled it out.
I believe it was the article as presented orally, and that was changed from the written version. Yes. The amounts are the same. Okay. Fifty-one, six sixty-four, two? Oh, I know that. It's what was presented orally this evening. Yes.
So it was mentioned, our question about meters and such. So I think at our last town meeting, there was an article, or there was a question about meters being replaced. This woman, young lady, had mentioned it. So the meters actually are older and need to be replaced. Our director, PPW director, had came to our meeting and talked about it, and they are actually really old. They need to be replaced. But unfortunately, the article or the idea was let down. It did not want, they did not want to fund it. So again, wire users were out of luck. So we needed to fund it ourselves, or we needed to look at other avenues. So could this ARPA or AAR, whatever, could that, those funds or be used for the meters? Since meters may produce a wrong, you know, cost or price, and or not working properly, maybe part of the deficit or problem?
Thank you. It's a great question, but it's not on the topic. So unfortunately, I'm hoping people listened, but the topic is the ARPA funds to work on the ARPA deficit projected for the year. Does anyone else have any questions? What? Would you repeat your motion, please?
Yes, I will. And I do understand that it's confusing sometimes. I've been many years on that side of the table when there's a change on town meeting floor. So I will, I'll go through the article one more time. So the motion is that the town vote to transfer from ARPA, which stands for the American Rescue Plan Act, funds the sum of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents to fund the projected FY22 operating deficit for the Water Department, and to decrease the FY22 water budget as voted in Article Seven of the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-one Annual Town Meeting by seventy thousand dollars, from one million, one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars to one million, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, as presented.
Thank you. Does everyone have that correct now? Okay. I don't see any more questions or hands. All those in favor. I'm sorry. Did I miss a hand? Way in the back. Okay. There's no light back there. I can't see. Sorry.
So now I just have a question to this water budget deficit that seems to be ongoing. At any meeting, we hear about this. So I'm curious, is anybody in the process of finding out why? So I'm curious, is anybody in the process of finding out why this is actually happening? I mean, does Veolia have something to do with this? Their cross, obviously they're a profit organization. So has anybody looked into that as a town?
Is that Mr. Watkins out there?
It is.
Good evening. So to answer your question, and I'm glad you asked, this is a multifaceted issue. It took decades to get us into this situation. So please give us the courtesy of a couple of years to get out of it. But we are working to address it. There are a handful of problems that I would say are within the four corners of this article. So among our water meters, we're not getting accurate reads on how much water people are using. That did go to town meeting, it was moving down. A lot of it, our PPW director, Brian Frodo, has been working to find a way to make it happen. And that will be partially funded using ARPA funds. In addition, the water plant facility itself that we share with Ashburnham didn't have an effective capital plan in place. Over the past six months, we've been working with Ashburnham and Veolia, the contractor, to get an impactful capital plan in place so that we can fix what's wrong with the system now and also project out five, 10, 15 years from now what some of our expenses are going to be coming down the road instead of waiting for something to fail and then scrambling to find the money. We also have a sewer plant that we operate by ourselves. It's also going through the same capital process. Beyond the plants, we also have to account for all pipes in the road. And we haven't had an accurate study of those pipes done in a really long time. That just wrapped up in terms of the fieldwork and surveying. So we're waiting to get that data and to compile the list of some of those impactful areas that we can address in terms of leaks. About 28% of the water that we treat in the plant is unaccounted for, meaning that from the time that it leaves the plant, money that we're paying to treat, from the time it leaves the plant, it never leads it to a meter. You know, we lose that for leaks, we lose that for other areas. So we're looking to address that, too. There's a lot of issues that go into it. And there's a lot of data that we have to go out and find. We've been hiring professionals and the engineers to go out and find those issues for us. Once we have that data, that will in turn help this board make the informed decision in terms of where the water rate should be or shouldn't be, in either direction. But at the end of the day, we need to account for the cost of treating the water. We also need to account for the cost of running the plants, maintaining the plants, and then getting the water from the plant to where our house or business is going to. So that's a very long answer to your question. We're just reviewing something about it and the answer is yes.
So we are directly performing an audit against Veolia just to find out what they're doing for what they're charging?
The answer is, for that presently is no, we're not auditing Veolia. We're addressing the five known issues that we definitively know exist.
Can we audit them in the future?
I suppose we could do anything, but for now, we're doing the things that we are, we know are known issues that we can address around later.
Leaky pipes.
That is correct.
Yeah. I just think it would be a really good idea to perform an audit on that company just to find out, I mean, they're a, you know, for-profit company, just to find out what was spending and where it goes.
That's certainly something.
Should be transparent as to what they're doing for that money. I'm sure it must be somewhere.
That's certainly something that's on the table. And that's part of the rate study. So part of the reason that we're doing that rate study is because we want to make sure that we go outside of Veolia's orbit and have a party participate and execute that study that has zero connection to Veolia. So there is going to be an outside set of audits. But in order to do that study, we need the data from all the things that I just listed. Move the question?
Thank you. Move the question. I think we've heard it long enough. And it's time to move on. Therefore, using your keypads, all those in favor of Article 7 as read twice? A or 1 is a yes, B or 2 is a no, please vote. And this is a majority. 70% in favor, 30% opposed. Article 7 passes. Article 8, select from the library.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 8, again, this is going to be slightly different than what we have. I move that the town vote to transfer from ARPA, ARPA funds, the sum of $26,127.33 to fund the projected FY '22 operating deficit for the wastewater department and to decrease the FY '22 wastewater budget as voted in Article 8 of the May 17, 2021 Annual Town Meeting by $100,000 to $1,412,166 as presented.
Oh, here's second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 8 as identified verbally. And the vote of the selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend the article 3 to 2.
3 to 2. And the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted not to recommend the article 6 to 0.
Okay. This is a majority vote as well. Explanation from Selectmen Library?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As we just discussed in Article 7, the water, the wastewater go hand in hand. So everything that we spoke about in the last article, the reasoning, everything?
As far as I can tell, I remember everything we talked about applies to Article 8 as well. But the reasoning, the work that we're doing, et cetera.
Okay, so the reasons I don't need to ask again. Okay. Any questions, comments? I see somebody behind me? Yes?
Again, to speak to the Finance Committee's reasons for not recommending this article.
Selectmen agreed to point out, the same as well. It doesn't resolve a one-term problem. It is a, I think it's premature to realize that the state to make some adjustments to the budgets, so that we're not sort of grossly, not in the budget, but sort of grossly underfunded. But we can project that we'll have a deficit to deal with in May. The Finance Committee feels that rather than address a potential unknown number, that it's wiser to wait. The funds that we're being proposed to fund this article will be available in May. And we have a much clearer idea as to what final number it will be. It also provides the town more time for the revenue to be addressed.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
If I may, to the Moderator, to the Finance Committee. With the understanding that the board of Selectmen has until November 22nd to decide where hell this hole is going to get plugged, does the Finance Committee have any recommendations? Our three options, as we see it, is the ARPA funds tonight, raise the water sewer rates within the next two weeks, or increase the tax rate?
I guess from my perspective, it would be raising the rates or something. And I think, I think we're so far behind on rates right now that to bring the rates up to the point where it actually did, should be to come up with a plan that puts it in place within your period of time where there's a series of steps to increase the rates so that the users are supporting the enterprise. So that's, that's a step to take in addition to the other two.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any other, last call for questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 8 as presented verbally with a majority vote being required, press 1 or A for yes, press 2 or B for no, and please vote. And it passes 71% to 29%. This article is approved. Article 9, select person, Solter, please?
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,553.30 for the fiscal year '22 Veterans Services Director for the town account as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 9 as presented. Vote of the Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted not to recommend 6 to 0.
Okay, we'll give the explanation and come back to you, Finance Committee. Explanation, select person, Solter?
This article proposes to supplement the fiscal year '22 Veterans Services Budget, allowing for 70 additional hours to address a backlog of reporting issues to improve services provided to our veterans.
Thank you. Reasons from the Finance Committee?
Yes, certainly the director of the Veterans Service is entitled to be paid for all the additional hours that he works. It's just that it does require a vote to transfer from free cash to add that money to that account. Every year, at the end of the year, the Finance Committee needs the vote to balance the budget. Certain accounts that it might be over, and there are other accounts that it under. And we vote to transfer money to balance out those budgets. An unexpected expenditure of $1,500 is not really rise to the level of needing to go to the town and ask for that money to balance the budget. It hasn't been paid. And we have a reserve account for situations where unexpected expenses need to be covered. To purged out, hoping in the water, that we give that money, it's just unnecessary.
Thank you. This is a majority vote, as I said earlier. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Madam Moderator?
I heard it from somewhere. Select person will point.
If he's willing, I would like to ask the town manager to tell town meeting why he felt the need to put this article on the record.
Thank you. To answer the question, this article is not really about money at the end of the day, at least not to me. This is something that was important because when I first got to town, we had walked into a situation where unfortunately, we lost our veterans agent. There's a backlog of issues. And our new veterans agents are doing excellent job, coordinating with the state, trying to get us off the date. The issue is there have been inconsistent payments going out to our veterans. And so I hear from a lot of the community veterans and their spouses who rely on these checks to fund. And so at the end of the day, you know, while we certainly could have addressed this at the end of the year for a transfer, we've done it quietly. I want to make sure that this is a move that we did lightly. Because that was something that was, that personally, as manager, I felt was important. And I felt it was important for the community to know that they were supporting veterans and that this was an issue in terms of town hall operations that we were addressing actively. And, you know, it's not, it doesn't support veterans, I'm not supporting that statement. And I definitely understand the sentiment behind their vote, and I appreciate it. But again, today, it was important to me to make sure that it's a gesture that the community had an opportunity to vote to make sure that they knew they were being supported, that there was a shortcoming on the town in terms of how that office was being managed previously, to make sure that they knew that there was a finite place to pick a move, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 9 as presented, yes vote is 1 or A, no vote is 2 or B. Please vote. And the vote is 81% in favor, 19% oppose. The article passes. Article 10. Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $50,000 to the OPEB trust account as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 10 as presented. Vote, this is a majority vote. Vote of the Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended to approve 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 6 to 0.
Thank you. And the explanation from Dr. Ward?
The town has previously established an OPEB trust account. However, it's not been consistently funded. This is an explanation that provided the union of the union. The town will help us to get the account back on track as the fiscal best practice.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 10 as presented, signify with pressing 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And this passes 92% to 8%. Motion is passed. Article 11, Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $50,000 to a reserve account established to mitigate the town's liability for contractual separation payouts as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 11 as presented. Majority vote will be required on this article. Vote of the Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend the article 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 6 to 0.
Thank you. Explanation?
Yes, this account sets aside costs to address potential budget shotfalls in the event of mass contractual separation through time and/or otherwise. An individual lease appointment will require payout application, in some cases, sick down. And this account will reduce the potential financial exposure to the town.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 11 as presented, signify with your keypad. A or 1 for yes, B or 2 for no. Please vote. Voting has ended. 93% in favor of Article 11, 7% oppose. The article passes. Article 12, Dr. Ward?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $130,000 to the stabilization account as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 12 as presented. Vote of the Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted to recommend 5 to 0.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve the article 6 to 0.
Thank you. This is a majority vote. Could we have an explanation, please?
Yes, it's recommended that the community maintain a stabilization account represented by 5 to 10 percent of the annual water delivery. It's been above $1.5 million to $3 million. These funds will be available, should be, should be a lot of time expensive here. Stabilization account currently stands at $1,166,750. This transfer would help move us towards a goal of that 5% threshold. It's about $1.5 million.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 12 as presented, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And 99% in favor, 1% oppose. Article 12 passes. Article 13, select person will point?
I move to authorize the town manager, in accordance with provisions of MPL Chapter 44 or Section 21C, enter into a lease purchase agreement for a term of Section 21C, enter into a lease purchase agreement for a term of three years for the acquisition and equipping of a crack dealer for use by the Department of Public Works at a total cost of $93,382.16.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 13 as presented. Please be aware this requires a two-thirds vote. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of selectmen voted to recommend this article, five zero.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends six zero.
Thank you. And the explanation, please?
The DPW has a line item of $200,000 in the annual operating budget for outside services. We've spent up to $90,000 in the years past for crack dealing services. This purchase will allow us to bring these services in-house for significant savings and better services. This will be annually over three years at $31,127.72 per year, using funds that are typically appropriated in the general operating budget.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Use your keypads. All those in favor of Article 13 as presented, signify with pressing A or 1 for yes, B or 2 for no. Two-thirds vote required. Please press. And the vote is ninety-nine percent to one percent. No question there. About two-thirds vote, the article passes. Article 14, Selectperson will point, please.
I move to accept the deed and lieu of foreclosure from Michael, I apologize for mispronouncing, Michael Thoreen and Bonnie Thoreen, or from the then current owners pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 60, Section 77C, two parcels of land with the improvements thereon identified as accessories map 5C3-0-20 located at 3 Beach Street, and accessories map 5C3-0-220 located at 11 Beach Street as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 14 as presented. This is a majority vote. Vote of the selectmen, please?
Board of selectmen voted to recommend five zero.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend five one.
And then we'll hear the one. If he or she wishes.
So my recommendation to not approve this was simply because it's a property that is known to have some cleanup required, hazardous, and those can be extremely expensive, and once we accept the property, we accept the whole life of it.
Thank you. Could I have an explanation from the maker of the motion?
This property owes $150,000 in back taxes. Rather than go through the courts, this process will allow the property owner to voluntarily turn the parcels over to the town.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
If I could just highlight a little bit of some of the backstory of this and some of the work that's been done.
Our Town Manager, please.
Thank you. So, and I do agree that on sites like this, it's kind of, it's a gift, but you have to kind of keep an eye on it, because you don't know necessarily what you're getting. So, personally, I did run it out of town, I went to the finance committee, looked at the possibility of transferring some funds, so that we could do some Phase 1 and Phase 2 testing on that site. Our concern was, we didn't want to accept this property and then find out how a million-dollar cleanup attached to it. So we did do a very thorough study, we found some standard hazardous building materials, specimens like paint, etc., and that's everything you would expect to find. And then, given the nature of the work that was done on that site, where it was not a lot of garage, we did also expect to find drums, tires, miscellaneous materials, also, you know, some oil on the property, some leaks on the hydraulic lifts and everything along those lines. So, part of the reason we're doing that study is because we wanted to know what would it cost to clean it up, so that it wasn't a question mark, so we could know with relative certainty how much it would be. That came to about $128,500, and that addresses the items that we listed there. So, the plan for the property would be to raise the structure, because it's efficient. The two-family structure next to the garage, and the next hour, as you'll see, there's a motion to, a potential motion to move both of those parcels over to the redevelopment board. The plan would be to rehab that two-family, get it back on the tax roll, sell it at market rate, and then use the proceeds from that to pay to raise the garage, clean up the structure, and put a park on the corner heading into town. So when you come over the bridge on Spring Street, one of the bigger gateways throughout downtown, so you see with a lot of painted garage, tire piles and oil barrels, and you're going to see a nice park, it would be a nice walk-in location. So if you don't have enough expense for the tax pay, that's a big piece of it. I also quickly want to thank Crazy Murphy, our claim and economic development director, for helping us move through the process of license, sort of professional in terms of determining what that could be done with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Article 14. All those in favor of Article 14 as presented, press on your keypad 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please press no. The vote is eighty-seven percent in favor, thirteen percent opposed. Since it's a majority vote, this article passes. Article 15.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town property located at 3 Beach Street and 11 Beach Street, as shown on accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-20, and accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-220, respectively, for such consideration, including nominal consideration, and upon such other terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to the execution of instruments and documents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 15 as presented. Vote of the selectmen?
Board of selectmen voted to recommend this article, five zero.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee has a recommendation for an amendment to this article, to include the Winchton Redevelopment Authority in the article, third line down, respectfully, to include there to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority for such consideration and upon such terms of...
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the article to include the Winchton Redevelopment Authority. We're moved, we're just, thank you. We're discussing the amendment only at this point. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'd like to hear from the explanation from the maker of the amendment first.
The Finance Committee felt that, as the intent is to give it to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority, we wanted it very clear and specified in that motion, so three, four, five years down the road, we don't hear it well. That wasn't what the motion read. We want to make sure that that's exactly how the motion reads.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments related to the amendment only? Hearing none. You're voting on the amendment to add to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority to the proposed amendment. All those in favor of Article 15 amendment signify yes by pressing A or 1, no by pressing B or 2. Please vote. The amendment passes ninety-seven percent to three percent. That is approved. I will review the Article 15 with the amendment, so that you'll know what you're voting on. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote, once we get to that vote. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 3 Beach Street and 11 Beach, as shown as accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-20, and accessories map 5C3 parcel 0-220, respectively, to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority, for such consideration, and upon such other terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said property or act in relation thereto. And I would ask the maker of the motion to provide an explanation for the article.
This would authorize the town to transfer these properties to the Winchton Redevelopment Authority with the intent to repair and sell the two-family residential structures, with proceeds to be used to clean up and remove the auto-repair shop site for future development as a passive park.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I see a hand raised in the prayer hall.
May I identify a funding source? Is there a grant or some kind of available funding to rehab or repair the, your property?
Can we get a response, please?
Yeah, so as previously described, the redevelopment authority will be using their funds to fix up the two-family property. The proceeds from that sale will replenish the funds that were used, and then anything remaining will be used to raise the garage structure, as well as put in the park. Once again, no cost to the back there.
Thank you. Question answered? Yes, sir.
It will be for sale, not for auction, so somebody can come and win the bid for $20, and then we're stuck in a hole?
We're going to be sold in a market room. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We're going to vote on the Article 15 as amended. This is requiring a two-thirds vote. Using your keypads, 1 or A is yes, 2 or no, 2 or B is no. Please vote. Ninety-seven percent in favor, three percent opposed. It certainly meets the two-thirds requirement. Article 15 passes. Article 16. Selectperson Ward?
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 4 Summer Drive, and shown as accessories map 5B3 parcel 0-153, for such consideration and upon such other terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said real property as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 16 as presented. This requires a two-thirds vote. Vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Five zero to recommend.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee had an amendment to this proposed article to include Bull Spit Brewing Company, as it is our understanding that the Bull Spit Brewing Company was supposed to have, this property was supposed to have been transferred to them, and somehow it was missed along the way. So this is just to clean up that. Again, for the same reasons as the prior motion, we wanted to make sure it was very clear, this is right after parcel 0-153 to Bull Spit Brewing Company for such consideration.
And what was the vote of Finance Committee, please?
Six zero.
What did you amend? Thank you. Any more comments?
You got it.
I got it. Oh, yes, I do. Okay. We're going to vote on the amendment and discuss the amendment first. The amendment is to add Bull Spit Brewing Company to Article 16. We, I'm sorry, I missed the second. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Thank you, guys. Okay, would the maker of the amendment like to speak to that? Or you already did? They're already spoken to. Okay, any further questions? Seeing none. You're voting on the amendment only. All those in agreement with the amendment to Bull Spit Brewing Company being added to Article 16, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And it's ninety-three percent to seven percent, the article passes. Now, we'll go back to the article itself as amended. Would someone like to speak, Mr. Ward, to the explanation for this article?
This parcel has no value, and was overlooked when transferring property at 4 Summer Drive to Bull Spit Brewing Company for redevelopment. This vote would not write down to transfer this property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? And I will read the whole article as amended before you vote. Okay, the article is amended. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the town-owned property located at 4 Summer Drive, and shown as accessories map 5B3 parcel 0-153 to Bull Spit Brewing Company, for such consideration and upon such other terms and conditions as the Board deems appropriate, and to take such additional action as may be needed to effectuate the purposes of this vote, including but not limited to execution of instruments and documents to convey said property or act in relation thereto. I don't see any other hands raised, so let's vote on this. All those in favor of Article 16 as just read, including the amendment, signify by pressing 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. Please vote. And as I said, two-thirds is required. Ninety-five percent to five percent, the two-thirds has been met. The article passes. Article 17. Selectperson Ward?
Madam Moderator, I move to accept Madison Avenue as a public townway. For all purposes, custom area, the public way, including maintenance area, and the location laid out by the Board of Selectmen, on plan, as Madison Avenue subdivision plan dated October 14, 2008, and drawn by hand-laid, engineering paint. Said plan has been placed on file with the town board, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept all such necessary property interest for said public way as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 17 as presented. It's a majority vote required. Vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Five zero to recommend.
Thank you. Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee recommends six zero.
Thank you. Would the maker of the motion provide an explanation?
This road is part of a recent development and has all necessary paperwork and documentation in place. This vote would allow the town to formally accept it as a public way. The road has also been checked by EPD, and it meets all the requirements.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Yes.
Is there any estimate, good big estimate, what a reasonable cost will be to bring it up to standards, or the drainage, or whatever is stated this year, or the first year?
Sure, this is a new development, so it presently is up to standard.
Good question. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 17 as read, press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no. This is a majority vote. Please vote. And the vote is ninety-seven percent to three percent. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you to the seventy-nine people who came today. Thank you.